Okay, it is seven o'clock. We are in, we've already called a meeting to order because we had non-public before that, so if you'll join me for the pledge. Uh, thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything?
No additional items.
No additional? Yeah, oops. Okay, the first order of business is the approval of the school board meeting minutes for June 5th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Brody, seconded. Seconded by Jim. Any discussion, corrections, omissions on those minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye. And before we go on to the next item, I want to just apologize, Dr. Jim Manning is not here tonight. Some unexpected, uh, meeting came up for him, so he's not here tonight, but he did want to, uh, said that he, this is his hometown and he would have liked to have been here, but he can't be here unfortunately. Uh, okay, the next order of business is to approve the manifest being signed tonight, and this is a, a big list of manifests going back to our last meeting in June. So we have accounts payable manifests in the total of $5,889,878.66. And payroll manifests in the total of $4,983,961.63, for a total manifest of $10,873,840.29. Do I hear a motion to approve the manifest?
So moved.
Moved by Brody. Seconded by?
Sure.
All right. Seconded by Jim. Okay, all those in full favor of approving the manifest as presented. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well.
Do we have the manifest to sign or people?
Yes, there's five folders, so I was trying to be cognizant of your, yes, they said it's Tom and, um, second.
And if the manifest, uh, if there's not enough time tonight, they'll be available tomorrow to sign as well.
I think it's, I'm listed on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. If you want to bring those over, I can start signing now. I don't really, like, I don't want to, I don't want to wait to sign five binders after the meeting. I'd rather do it while we're doing it.
Well, I also know we have one tomorrow night, so I will bring that back.
That's attached to my agenda.
Okay. Just get cracking around. Thank you.
I've got one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public input. Um, and talking to our cameraman tonight, if you'd like to say something, please stand up and face the camera so you're speaking into his microphone, uh, and then we can go from there. So anybody that would like to speak, um, please do so now. Everyone has about, about five minutes, fifteen minutes now, and we'll have fifteen minutes again at the end of the meeting. Anyone who'd like to say anything? Yes. State your name, town you're from, and please face the camera so that you can speak right into them.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Kate Pedernall, state representative, represent Wolfboro and Tufferville, and finally was able to fit a school board meeting into my schedule, so I just wanted to let you know who I am, and I'm welcome to any comments, suggestions, anything, any of you have. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, let's move right on to the superintendent's report there.
Thank you. So the first item is the authorization to suspend. So the first two items are, uh, come before the board every year. The first one is to vote on, uh, the authorization to suspend, giving the superintendent and assistant superintendent, authorization to suspend students from school for up to ten days. Superintendent may designate this authority to school principals and assistant principals. Um, the superintendent and assistant superintendent are authorized, following a hearing, to continue the suspension of a pupil for a period in excess of ten school days, up to a total of twenty days. And if the board, uh, accepts this, I will pass around the form for each board member to sign.
Okay, do we have any questions? Do I hear a motion? Yes.
Yeah, I'm just questioning, I noticed on the form that, uh, it appears to be open-ended. Is this intended to be, uh, revisited annually or?
This is annually.
Yeah.
Okay, so should we, should that be noted, uh, somewhere?
Um, it can be. I believe it's, um, in policy and the RSA to be annual.
Oh, yes.
Um, but we can, I can add on the form with an end date.
Okay. For the school, school year, uh, ending June 30th, 2024.
Sure.
And just for efficiency, I would have the same question on the next item that will become here.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Uh, then I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent and assistant superintendent to suspend students from school for up to ten days in accordance with RSA 193, goal 13 dash, uh, Roman I subsection B, with the edited change by the superintendent.
One second.
Okay, moved by Brody and seconded by Charlene. Okay, any questions on that authorization? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well.
Thank you. The next item is, uh, school board assurances for grants, to authorize a superintendent, assistant superintendent, business administrator, and director of curriculum to sign assurances for all grants and requests to and from trust funds. And if the board agrees, I will pass this around for signatures, and I've added the end date of June 30th, 2024.
All right. I'll make the motion again unless anyone has any disagreement.
Go ahead, Brody.
Um, I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent and assistant superintendent, business administrator, and curriculum directors to sign the assurances for all grants and requests to and from the trust with the edited add date by the superintendent.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Okay, uh, all those in favor. Uh, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay.
Thank you. The next item is ratification of nominations, uh, nominations and summer hires. Uh, so in non-public, the board voted to approve and accept ratification of all nominations and summer hires. Um, we had ten employees who we hired this summer, so that item, uh, was already approved.
Correct.
The next item is the SRO MOU, also known as School Resource Officer Agreement. Um, so this item, there's a, um, the edited version that's in your packets, um, is as a result of our June meeting. Thank you. So at, uh, prior to the June meeting, I brought the draft MOU to the Wolfboro Police. The chief and the captain and I reviewed the MOU. Um, we, uh, came to an agreement. I brought that draft to the June, uh, school board meeting. We had some feedback. We integrated that feedback. We've since had some more recent, um, suggested edits, and I believe the board was privy to that, those edits. Um, I recommend the board vote to approve this, um, with those edits, and I'll bring those edits to, um, the police, um, after this meeting.
I had two edit suggestions that are very mine, but, um, on page four, in the second paragraph after the bullets, and on page five, in the third paragraph, the word agreement is used, but the document is described in the first paragraph on the first page as an MOU, so I, I'd like us to see us use the term memorandum of understanding throughout the entire, um, document. Do I need to make a motion to that? Or is it? Is it a grievle?
I mean, it's a, it's a discussion.
Yeah, we could certainly, uh, we can certainly make that if everyone's in agreement to.
Yeah, because we use MOU in the first section to describe it, and name it an MOU, but in those sections, it says agreement. I think just for continuity's sake, we use the same term throughout.
I agree. I think that makes sense. Okay.
I had trouble with it. Oh, I printed it out so I could read it better, and there's no page number, so then.
True.
I figured it out, of course, but I don't know if it's necessary, being an electronic person.
We can add those.
I, I think that's a great suggestion. I'd like to see page numbers, so when we're talking about it.
All right, so we're going to do some edits to lay the page numbers for them as well.
Yeah.
There's one, it's, it's not terribly substantive, but the language I think is important in the scope of assignment on page two. Um, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm going to be pretty insistent that this position not be used to add insult to injury, so to speak. Um, so the, the SRO should not be assisting with school discipline. Um, and so we, that section of other violations of school rules, or was, that language was taken out, but, you know, there, there are a lot of those things that were previously landed that aren't against the law. And so I just, I want to be really clear about that the, the purpose here is to focus on addressing school safety issues, you know, violence, safety and, and violations of the law, if necessary, but not school discipline. It's.
Earlier, I think in the agreement, in the memorandum of understanding, I think that there, there was, I think I saw where it said, that under their role, they were not to be engaged in school discipline.
Yeah, I thought we removed that, and is it explicitly stated?
It's in this current draft.
Yeah, that's what I read in the draft, too.
That it says it's not going to be you, that their role does not include discipline somewhere. I don't remember exactly where.
Right, it said, it says on the previous page, both parties understand that the role of the SRO is to serve as a resource and not as a school disciplinarian, so we keep that consistent in the description of the scope of assignment. I just wanted to make sure we are clear there.
You want to say it explicitly twice?
Is there an edit that you have for that?
So, what I would recommend is the SRO position shall focus on assisting the district with school safety issues and, um, violations of laws as they arise.
What, so take out bullying?
So, so those typically are, like, in a school without an SRO, those would not be handled by a police officer. Those are handled.
But maybe, maybe Katie can help us with this. I, I think there's an RSA that specifically, um, it, it targets bullying.
Yes, there is.
So that would be a violation of law, so maybe not take out bullying?
I kind of agree with them, with you, Charlene, because I know that state statute.
Bullying is defined in statute, um, you know, what constitutes bullying, but in terms of, like, a criminal charge being filed, that's not typically the case. Um, the school districts operate all the time without officers in the building and the disciplinarian in the building. The assistant principal, the principal handle the discipline instead of it being a crime. And so the, the danger in blurring the lines between having that SRO intervene there is that now the student may be facing a criminal charge, whereas in a school without an SRO, they would be facing, not have a record, so.
If I could, absolutely. I think, um, actually, both could be true, because it's not only about intervening, intervening on these issues, but it's also about preventing, preventing.
Yes, so that was.
So preventing, um, preventing bullying. You know, we don't want a school resource officer who is there just to say, okay, who's breaking the law? We want to make sure no one's breaking the law. That, that's part of their job, but also being, um, someone who's part of the team, someone who is a resource for kids, someone who is, um, supporting students, you know, if they are, um, feeling unsafe, you know, maybe they, maybe they are angry and they want to take matters into their own hands. So it's also about prevention, um, not only about intervening, you know, trying to find what is against the law or discipline. Um, so when I read some of that scope of assignment, it is about assisting the staff, assisting the district with school safety issues and concentrate on those other concerns and how to prevent them. Um, but certainly we can edit, uh, what the board feels we should edit.
I, I think preventing bullying is important, but is it, is it, um, is it really part of the SRO's officer's scope of work? I mean, I think that would be more of our administration, teachers and guidance counselors that would be leading efforts for anti-bullying stuff.
Well, is it, uh, I guess my question would be, is it, um, preventing bullying or being a resource for somebody that's being bullied, uh, that, that resort, that they can go to the resource officer and tell them what's happening, and that resource officer then can bring that to the appropriate authorities to handle? Um, you know, it's, you know, this, this isn't specifically saying that they're going to charge somebody with a bullying crime. They can be a resource to handle, um, you know, concerns that some students may have. So I, I mean, I think it's important that bullying is, is, it is.
It does get there in that paragraph, you know, the emphasis for the position is prevention. Reactive measures such as arrest and direct interventions are also appropriate responses sometimes.
Excuse me, Tom. Question, Mr. Chair. Um, truancy concerns. Uh, not too long ago, we had a truancy officer. Do we still have a truancy officer?
We do.
We do.
Okay. When does it escalate up to a police action?
Uh, that would happen when it's, with, when it's excessive and the parent's not responding to the interventions.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, ten half-days is technically legally truancy, uh, but if we were to have a family that was not following compulsory ideals of, when I'm free to get your child to school, then the truancy officer would step in.
Okay, thank you very much.
And at what point would the SRO step in after that?
Uh, it would be in assisting with the, you know, if the family is not responding to the truancy officer, which has happened, the SRO will sometimes make that hoon visit if they will not allow the truancy officer, uh, to interact with the family. So they'll assist the school administration with, with that, with that. And help prevent truancy. So when the students in school, help them to come back to school. Offer outreach with our outreach counselor if needed, or social worker, so they work in cooperation with, um, social work at high school or outreach counselor if you don't like to bother.
I personally don't have a problem keeping bullying in, but, um, I would imagine, I'd probably prefer our district staff to be dealing with that issue on a daily basis and that students, um, be able to feel confident that they can go to our staff rather than the SRO about the issue, which I imagine is the case, but, um, I do think it's a good point, Steph, that, that seems more like a district role, especially because I don't think bullying is defined in the criminal statutes, defined in the education state statutes, so, but again, whoever the students feel like they need to go to so they can confide in, the problem gets solved, that's fine by me, but, yeah, that's just my two cents.
And, uh, just, uh, call attention, there was a question earlier about, uh, whether the language is in here regarding being a disciplinarian. It's the beginning of the last paragraph on the first page.
Okay.
If, if, in case you missed it.
Okay, so some edits to be made, um, and, uh, right now, we'd like to make those edits kind of off the, you know, uh, after, after we vote to approve, and then, uh, the edited version, we then go to the, uh, police department for their final approval.
Will, will the administration send the edited version to the board before it gets sent to the police department?
Yes.
Okay, so you're looking for a motion to approve the MOU with the proposed edits that we've discussed?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if no one else has any concerns, then I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Brody. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Okay, so there are edits that were turned in today, other edits that we just discussed now that will be included in the final version. Uh, so I will be voting on this plus the edits that have been presented and discussed, and then it will go to the police afterwards for final approval from my standpoint.
Can I make a, a, a suggestion, revision for that scope of assignment? If the, if the primary emphasis, um, Dr. Gray found is on prevention, could that be the first sentence and not be a subordinate clause? If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. True.
Then I'll amend my motion.
So just switch the two?
Okay.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to accept that.
Okay.
So you want to take the last sentence and make that the first sentence?
Yeah.
And that first paragraph?
Yeah, that seems to be what we all agree on, is that the emphasis on, for the position is on prevention.
Yeah.
Um, prevention of all those things.
I think that's what the first sentence is saying, and that's why the second sentence is like, okay, now although it is prevention, there may also be reactive measures. Um, but perhaps.
Well, I, let me, let me look at, just a thing. Um, we just basically stated that in the previous two sentences. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. The previous paragraph, the first sentence is, both parties understand that the role of the SRO is to serve as a resource and not as a school disciplinarian, and then it goes into a little more of their conduct, and then we're wanting to say that again as the first sentence of scope of assignment. Is that, is that what you want to do?
To be consistent.
I think it makes sense, and especially, um, we're just emphasizing that it's prevention, and that's the whole point of an SRO, and that's what the police department has told us, that's our ultimate goal for why they wanted this position hired, is for the prevention and to decrease the number of cases or mitigate any issues. I think emphasizing it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, no, I, I think moving that, that, uh, the sentence, it starts with, while the emphasis to the front is, I, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move that one to the top.
Yes, chair.
Just, just for information, is there a target date while we're trying to, uh, execute these agreements?
Ideally before school starts.
Yeah, September, the, the agreement is September 1st to June 30th, so it would be nice to have this in place before September 1st.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, will the police commissioners or anyone from the department come to the board to give an annual presentation or talk about the current status of the new position or what the current SROs are doing?
Within, within the.
I know there's a monthly report, but I don't know if it would be good for them to come and for the public to see.
Well, I think if we request their, their presence at any particular time.
I don't think we need any MOU, but I'm just wondering, is that something worth considering?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think anytime, uh, we ask them, they'll be more than happy to make a presentation to us on, on any of these issues, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on the MOU?
No, no, Mr. Chair. I see that, um, we did add the paragraph on, thanks, must be last, next to last page, under work schedule, very last paragraph, uh, should the SRO not be available to work in the district, the SRO of chief shall notify the Kingswood Regional High School Assistant Principal's office as soon as impending absence is known. Said notice shall be made by the chief, the SRO are duly authorized, designated. Uh, telephone or rate of communication to the high school must be made if the SRO is going to ride at school later than the scheduled or leave school campus during a regular scheduled shift. Um, was there any thought to, um, if a SRO cannot attend a certain day, have an officer fill in?
Well, I think, I think the, uh, the reason that they can is because the police department needs them at, uh, on-site, uh, probably because they're short of help. Uh, ordinarily, if, uh, if an SRO is, is off, or if they're, maybe if an SRO is sick, they may have a substitute that can come in for a day.
Don't they need to be trained, though?
They, they do.
And we have more than one now.
Yeah, and we, we have more than one SRO.
So that's ideal.
We needed more.
That's right.
Right, right, but for, for a single day, for a single day, if an SRO is out, um, you know, for, for whatever reason, whether it be a sickness or the department's needs, we have to accept that as part of the, part of the MOU.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving with amendments as presented and previously sent to the SEU office, I guess? Uh, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay, so we're, we're good with that.
Thank you. So next item is the Carpenter Playground. Uh, the, uh, orig, the previous playground has been, uh, disposed of. It's a blank slate right now.
It is a blank slate.
And, uh, the new playground is slated to be built in the days, uh, the week just before school starts, so that is the plan. And, um, at the next school board meeting, provided that that is completed, um, we'll have that on the agenda again so the board can vote to accept the gift. So it, uh, has been donated, um, it's, you know, once it's fixed to the school property, uh, it will technically be a gift to the school district, so at that time, we'll have that, uh, item on the agenda for you in September, provided that that's complete.
Correct.
So that's a heads up for the September meeting.
Thank you.
Now, it's going to be my one question, is when we're going to vote to accept the donation, because I know I've, I've got the squeaky wheel on that one.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it has to be finished before we can accept it.
It has to be given.
It has to be there.
It's not there yet.
Yeah, if you, if you haven't been behind Carpenter School now, it is a blank slate.
We just saw.
We were there, we were there the other day.
I'll be there on, whenever, I'm going to help build it.
Oh, great.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
That's what, I thought it was a twenty-six, but yeah.
Two days.
Awesome.
It'll be fun.
Great.
Did you use the signup sheet?
I did. I used the signup sheet. I have the email, I have it in my calendar, so.
Excellent.
Have a great time.
And the last item is food service costs, so I'll turn over to Kathy O.
So every year I have to come to you, um, it's a federal mandate, it's based on section 205 of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010, uh, which requires school food authorities to adhere to the mandated, um, mandates as of 2011. So the mandate calls for equity in school lunch pricing between the paid lunches and then the free and reduced lunches, and it requires all schools to gradually increase the price of the paid meal to the equitable level, which each year, the federal government comes out with that dollar amount, and that is three sixty-five, three dollars and sixty-five cents. So, um, there are, um, some stipulations to say that we, um, do not have to hit the three dollars and fifty-six cents, they can round down to the five cent mark, which is three dollars and fifty-five cents, but it also states that it caps, you don't have to go more than ten cents per year, but we do have to, um, increase our prices currently, um, before tonight's meeting, our hopefully approval. Um, the elementary school lunches, paid lunches now, are at two dollars and eighty cents, and the middle high school lunches are at three dollars, um, per lunch. And I, um, based on the calculator that I have to use, that it's called a price equity tool, and it's required to be submitted with our, um, National School Lunch Program, um, application every year, uh, we do need to raise our prices, and I am proposing that we raise, um, the elementary lunches, like I said, from two eighty-five up to three dollars per paid lunch, and our middle high school lunches from three dollars and twenty cents up to three dollars and fifty cents. And that is, um, not obviously, that gives us a weighted average of three dollars and twenty-five cents, which is below the, um, mandated amount, but we are within the regulations of how much we raise and what we are obligated to do, so I look to your approval, um, because I know that the food service director is itching to be able to put that free and reduced lunch application out to parents, which is ever so important.
Discussion.
Um, I was writing down the numbers as you were saying, um, so you said two eighty, this is the current price, but then you also said two eighty-five, is it? And then you said three dollars, and then you said three twenty-five.
I apologize, it was two eighty-five and three twenty are the current prices. I apologize, yeah.
Two eighty-five and three twenty are current.
And three twenty. I'm looking to go up to three dollars and three fifty. And it's a weighted average, by raising that up, that's part of the whole price, um, uh, price equity tool that I have to use, but that, by raising them up to three and three fifty makes it three twenty-five, is how they look at the district.
And so the whole district average has to go up fifteen cents?
It has to go up a lot more, but we did not go, it, it allows you to go, um, it allows you to, there's a, if you choose to, a ten cent cap, so we don't have to raise more than ten cents, but we are so far behind. Um, I think a lot of that had to do with, um, COVID and, um, being able to offer free, um, school lunches for two full years and not have to raise prices if they were free for everyone for two full years. for everyone for two full years.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Do, do we have, um, any numbers on, in terms of what the district had to pick up for the TAP for unpaid lunches?
I don't have that with me and sitting in my office back, um, back at the office, but I know it's increased from, obviously there wasn't, there wasn't any lunch, there was a small amount last year, um, but it has gone up. The food service director was very concerned.
Yeah, that's a statewide trend.
Yes, it is, yeah, because they're not allowed to refuse any, any lunches to anyone. They can offer an alternative, but they don't make that known. It's still a reimbursable meal, um, to a student, so it's nothing, um, no less of a, a nutritional factor, um, but it might be a, a less expensive meal to produce, but we have to offer a meal to every student and not turn away because that is the law as well.
So I have a, I have a question with the reporting requirements. So obviously every meal we serve, we work the fence and we, I assume we break it up between the numbers of free meals, reduced priced meals based on.
And full paid meals.
And full paid meals. What if the district were to expand the number of students who could qualify for free or reduced priced meals? How would that change the reporting requirements? And obviously that would be included in our.
We, we can't choose that. That's, that's National School Lunch Program, so we, it, they have to fill out the application and that's a federal. So we can't change the numbers to make them qualify for free and reduced.
To that end, the application process, I tried to find it online today. I, and I know it's a lot of work on the part of teachers and staff to get that information in. Uh, and I'd like to know more about the, uh, application process, if it's online. I, I know it's, it can be online and it can be in-house. How we can better make that flow to reach folks for whatever reason aren't filling it out, doesn't it?
And, and there's been a, a, um, tag team effort on that.
I know, it's just.
Huge, right. And, and obviously there are other things that, you know, bubble up so that, you know, it, it can't always be, but it's, it's, it's the food service director, it's the counselors, it's the principal, you know, whoever can jump in and, you know, have your mom and dad fill this out, contact the parents, go online, you know, that they're willing to walk them through it because obviously the more people that fill it out and qualify for it also, number one, creates less of a, um, a burden on the family. It also creates less of a burden on, on the district for unpaid lunches, as well as increases our percentage, our rates for revenue for the receiving. So it's, it's all tied in.
Having filled those out before, um, they are really complicated and you have to have all of the financial information for your household at the, it's like filling out a FAFSA almost.
But please reach out to the food service director.
You have to fill up for each individual student too, right? You can't do it just as a family.
Um, it's been a while since I've seen them. I don't think, you do it for pre-school, so if you have more than one student at the same school, but if it's a different school.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I assume then like schools like Manchester that offer free meals, there must be some kind of federal program targeted to those communities?
They could. I, I'm not familiar with them, but they could. I know that obviously if you hit a certain percentage of free and reduced, there's more.
Yeah, and I assume our school district, I mean, where at like what, what percentage of our students aren't for reduced meals? It's like about?
Depends by school.
Right.
Varies by school.
Yeah, well, it's a district average, it's under about like thirty-three percent?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, and so to qualify, it's a hundred eighty percent for reduced price and a hundred, of the federal poverty level, a hundred thirty percent for, uh, free meals?
I, I honestly, I couldn't tell you at the moment, I've read too many numbers.
Sorry.
I'm trying to wrap up.
Have it calculated.
Charlene?
And I would like to add, of course, I appreciate the work that everybody puts into this, cause it is, it's colossal, it's huge. I have a classroom teacher, one of you in the beginning of all this, the iterations that went through to make sure children are fed and nobody's gonna turn away a child, obviously. And I did a little digging on my own, uh, actually just today, cause I was curious how much money, what a family, you know, what the cutoff is. And this is twenty twenty-two numbers for, uh, New Hampshire, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight with four, a family of four. First I read it was four children, it's a family of four.
Family of four, yeah.
Um, and I'd also like to know more, I think it'd be prudent for us, and forgive my, uh, bumbling through this, being new, I'd like, like to look into the, I forget it, my community eligibility provision from the federal government.
That's, that's what Manchester does offer, the free meals are gonna allow it to spend. I don't know if we qualify or not, but we probably don't have a high enough rate district wide.
Well, I think it's, it's worth our time to pursue that.
I would agree, I think.
We can support the families, uh, and the schools that, uh, to get these, this information in so that we can, so the stigma, we just no time, maybe you don't have the internet on, 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 on.
To piggyback off what you're saying, it also boos us on behalf of the taxpayers because every child that could qualify for free or reduced priced meals, that is not on our, you know, on our rolls ultimately with the state department of education, it's less adequacy that our school district gets, so, you know, so even if a family does hot, does cold meals that they bring from home, as long as, you know, we know that they qualify for those free or reduced priced meals, then, you know, the state will provide the school district and ultimately the taxpayers with more resources, cause we're already providing services, sometimes special services to those students, cause students on free and reduced priced meals disproportionately are more likely to need special services, so.
Okay.
And, um, can, can you, at a future meeting, keep us apprised of what our TAP is that we're picking up from unpaid school lunches?
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, just because it, it's something that we might need to consider as we build the budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, Charlene, when it, oh, I was gonna.
Yeah, I've been.
Yes, I know.
The next, I'm sorry, the next board meeting, I don't know what that is, because it's, it's only determined at the end of the year, because obviously it's a working target during the year as.
Charlene?
Well, I looked at that item and I decided that I was going to just voice my philosophical opposition to, um, requiring children until the age of sixteen, right, to be in school? Is that the age? Is it eighteen now? I, um, I don't think it's right to require the children that we require to be in school to have to pay for the food. They need to educate their, uh, to nourish their brains so they can learn. And the fact that there is availability of, of what Brody was mentioning, talking about the community, what's, what's it called?
CED.
Uh, community eligibility provision at a school or district or whatever, one forty percent. I would very much like to see just exactly how many free meals we can provide as is or currently, but I would also be interested in knowing, um, how much it would cost the district if we provided free lunches for everyone as we did during COVID.
Well, I think we're just shot based on the percentage. I don't think we reached our forty percent threshold. I can't remember a time when I followed, either been on the board or off the board and followed closely when we've hit it. So if we did, I mean, most school districts that do qualify in New Hampshire do, but I do agree with you. I mean, we give students pens, pencils, paper, teachers, electricity, Chromebooks, buildings, brick and mortar, everything that they need to sustain themselves to learn in the classroom, but for some reason we treat food differently. But how are you gonna learn if you're hungry or if you're starving? So I do agree with you with that sympathy, but I just don't think there's anything we can do.
To me, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. You, well, are we, are we forbidden by the feds to provide free, free lunches to everyone?
There are nine states that have chosen to make it a statewide, um, initiative to provide school lunches for every student, and there are individual districts who've decided that. We make sure not one of those states that, um, of high level has decided, but we as a district count some districts that we make sure to have.
And to that end, we just need to find out. We need to do the digging, we need to find the numbers. I know statistically, more children ate during COVID.
Yep, yes, they do.
Um, and there's certainly precedent around the country and, and, uh, we just need to find out here and double our, the region of the school district.
Tom?
I'd just like to make a word aware of, um, we, we have online payment where parents can pay for the kids' lunches, which I think is a great idea and encourage it and probably we would be better off doing that more than, you know, cash and so forth. Um, the, there's a disincentive to families using it in that I think it's a two dollars seventy-five cent, um, surcharge every time you make a payment. Now, if you're making a payment of two hundred dollars, that's not an issue, but if you're paying week to week, ten or twelve dollars, two seventy-five out of that is a big deal. And if we.
It's like an ATM fee.
Well, that's exactly.
That's exactly what it's.
Yeah, it's a processing fee, yes.
And I understand, as Heather explains to me, that is from the vendor, but going along the idea of providing free lunch, if, um, families fall within the, uh, the need for free lunches or reduced lunches, perhaps we could, uh, pay that amount at two seventy-five or whatever it's gonna be.
That's a budget discussion.
Okay, I think, yeah, this, yeah, obviously this is all, all part of the budget process. I think tonight we have to decide, we're not gonna make this change today, uh, so we have to either vote on upping the, uh, the food costs for this coming school a year until we get more of this stuff under control. So right now, that's what we're, we're attacking right now. This whole discussion about free lunches and all is something that, uh, once we get some budgetary numbers and get into the budget season and understand where we are with that, uh, we can make those decisions as well. But right now, I'm just saying, starting the school year, we need some numbers that the food service can work with.
Also too, that the free and reduced applications are due thirty days after the start of school. So once that timeframe period is closed, then we'll know what our free and reduced numbers are. Now granted, that doesn't mean that parents, no matter throughout the whole entire year, can, can sign, can, uh, apply again, uh, if there's a change or if there's a new family or, you know, whatever, they can apply as many times as they want during the year. It doesn't mean it has to be done, but that's when the bulk of them all come in and we have to report on that.
Well, I'll make a motion to cert the food service pricing for, of three dollars for elementary student lunch and three fifty for middle and high school student lunch.
Okay, do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Second by Tom?
I, I just wanna really emphasize, I hope we really do next meeting explore this and consider options in the budget process for how we can alleviate some of the burden, cause if parents don't pay their school debt, the property taxpayers ultimately pay it. Um, and, you know, obviously we wanna make sure our students are well-fed so they can learn, they, they're gonna perform better in the class, and be less likely to have behavioral issues when they're well-fed, so I think it, it's a good priority, goes hands in hand with making sure you create a good educational environment.
Can I also add that the district does a phenomenal job within sixty-eight hours of hunger? I mean, that's beside the point, but there is a huge, huge.
Absolutely.
And nights against hunger.
Yeah, yes.
It's a huge program.
They do a lot, and, and transportation helps out, everyone.
Over a hundred and fifty bags, I think, go home.
Yeah. Does somebody explain a little bit about that?
What's the time? Go ahead.
Monday, Monday morning?
And sixty-eight hours of hunger, they send bags home with students that have meals that are like non-perishables, and nights against hunger helps collect some of the food for that, so they can give it to their peers or to the elementary school students. Brewster also helps Academy with its N sixty-eight hours of hunger, so.
It's all volunteer.
It's, um, yeah, it's the private volunteer, just like kind of the food pantry too, but, um, you know, we can do our part too. And I think we are, we're emphasizing getting those free reduced priced meal applications built up. We do the online portal, which I think we're only like one of twelve school districts that do that, so that's really great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any, any more discussion on the raising of the, the dollars for food at the beginning of the year? Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jim, it's aye as well, okay.
Concludes the report.
Okay, um, I've got a couple of, uh, a couple of cards I received, uh, one from our Gold Scholar, the top Gold Scholar this year, uh, GW RSD School Board has a top Gold Scholar for Kingswood Regional High School, class of two thousand and twenty-three. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the opportunities I have, I have been given throughout my education in the district. I am very excited to continue my education at UNH with a major in wildlife and conservation biology. Thank you again, Tyler Okla. That was a very nice letter from Tyler. And I received also a letter of thank you. Uh, this is from, uh, Jeanne McAvoy, who retired. I wanted to thank you for your continued support during my time at KRMS. I feel blessed to have been part of such a wonderful learning community. I will forever be grateful for these past thirteen years with gratitude, Jeanne McAvoy. So those are two very nice letters we received. Also, we, uh, we sent congratulations to Courtney Shepherd from Osiphe Central School on the birth of her baby. Uh, we did send expressions of sympathy to Kathy LeMay, Crescent Lake School, Karen Beaverstock New Durham School, and Megan Moriarty, uh, New Durham School as well. And we sent a letter of thank you to Dr. Wayne Peternell, uh, for the donation of his telescope to the Kingswood Regional High School Science Program. Uh, also, the, uh, under my report, the New Hampshire School, uh, School Board Association Delegate Assembly is October fourteenth. Uh, I will be there, um, as not only a board member, but also as a voting member for our district. Uh, we're having a meeting next week to discuss the, uh, the new, uh, resolutions that are going to be presented this year, and as soon as I have those resolutions, I'll get those to all the board members. And before the, the meeting is October fourteenth, so at our September meeting, uh, we should be able to review the resolutions to see if you have any input on those at the, that I can make at the delegate assembly.
How does that process work? Do we inform our delegate how to vote or is there a delegate?
Yes. Yeah, but, yeah, basically after you review that, if there's some modifications you wanna make to the resol- resolutions, if you agree or disagree with it, uh, you can let me know and then as the vote happens at the delegate assembly, I'll vote the way the school district wants me to vote. Okay? Okay, uh, anything else? I have nothing else on that. Uh, we'll go into committee meetings, academic affairs. Charlene, anything?
We have nothing this evening. You have a brief respite from wading through policies, but I'm sure this next month we will fire it up again.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Pittman, anything on building and maintenance?
Uh, the only thing I have to say is that, uh, our next scheduled meeting is September twenty-sixth at four P M. That'll be at the SAU office. That's currently at otherwise no other activity.
Can you say that again?
I'm sorry.
When's the next meeting?
It's going to be September twenty-sixth, four P M.
I have it in my calendar.
The SAU office.
Okay, under finance, the only thing I, I'd say under finances, obviously with the discussion tonight about food and all that, um, we have our finance meetings coming up in November, uh, so we'll have a lot to discuss on the financing and where our budget's gonna come in next year. Uh, so we'll start that process early. Uh, nothing under human resources tonight. Uh, advanced planning, you can see all the activities down below. Uh, on the twenty-eighth is a new staff orientation, uh, in-service days of twenty-ninth to the thirty-first, uh, meet and greet on the thirty-first for the middle school and the elementary schools. First day of school is September fifth, uh, and then our next board meeting is, uh, the eleventh, and before that at four o'clock is the reception for the new teaching staff, uh, new staff. Uh, and then our meeting is at six o'clock for non-public and our regular meeting starts at seven o'clock. Uh, open houses are already set for, uh, middle school on the thirteenth, high school on the fourteenth, Crescent Lake on the twentieth, Carpenter, Tufton Borough Open House on the twenty-first, New Durham and Osiphe on the twenty-seventh, and Effingham on the twenty-eighth. So busy, busy month for September. Okay, uh, we are at the point where we're doing public input, so if anyone would like to speak or have any input, uh, please again stand up and speak directly into the mic. Uh, if not, we'll close the meeting. Yes?
Kayla Guit from Wolfboro, and just a quick note on the school lunches. When I was in there doing things for my kids, I did look, I don't know if this is possible or if this is just for future discussions, um, but I was. But I was actually willing to like, if there's a way from the online portal to put extra funds in there as like a donation or as whatever, I would just happily, you know, put some extra funds in there to help offset other kids' costs. Just something to consider if that's in the future.
Excellent, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, closing comments by board members. The first thing I would say is thank you, Brookfield, for having us tonight. I appreciate that. We, we'd like to, like to do that, the summer meeting, obviously, it can be a little warm in here, but tonight isn't so bad. And we do, we do like to come out to every town that we can, so thank you for having us tonight. Anyone around the table? Dana, anything?
I would like to say, in my short three months, it's been so delightful to go to visit the schools to a, to a location. I said, we welcome visitors. And I wanna say all the best to the teachers out there who are starting to shiver with excitement, getting ready, they've probably been in their classrooms two or three times already if they ever left. And I'll, I'll close with, I couldn't help but think about one of my favorite kindergarten teachers with whom I worked. When the kids would come in, because you know kindergarten, that's pretty scary, the first, it's about to happen, I'm going to school, like my older brothers and sisters, and the kids would come up to her and say, Ms. Byer, this is hard. And she'd look at them and say, well, you can do hard things. And they would go, oh, and I just carried on. All the best.
I just wanted to.
Charlene, yes.
I just wanted to thank you, the town of Brookfield, for whatever you had to do to make this happen here, which is great and it's always a lovely drive. And, and just echo what Mary said, that I'm glad that we, we have such a fabulous group of educators. And I'm, I'm also thankful that our S A U worked so hard over the summer to make sure that we filled ten positions that were vacant. That was huge. And enjoy the waning days of summer.
If summer happened, I don't remember. For about five minutes, what's that?
I, I would just say I support what has already been said. Well said.
I just, I just wanna thank the administration for compiling the unofficial monthly budget reports. I think the budget oversight report is really important. And, you know, we owe creating the best educational opportunities for students in this district, but also owe the taxpayers the best bank for their bucks. So being able to just see that spending in real time and follow that as we move to the budget season has been really appreciated. I also wanna say thank you to all the teachers and parents for their, you know, all their contributions to the district and for their faith in the district. I know, I know there've been some folks who've said some negative things, but I think we're on the up and up and that we're proving everyone why Governor Warren, your regional school district is a great, great, great place to raise a family and to enroll your kids in school. So I'm very proud of having a graduate here and to continue being on the board here.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, I support everything that has been said before me. And I'm just really looking forward to working with the board and supporting our, our teachers, our children and teachers and staff going forward.
Stephanie?
I echo what Jim said.
Okay.
I could change from my, I have to say something. When you go to open house, you'll notice, but as you walk through the many buildings of the district, how well-maintained they are. Everything seems to be shiny. I don't see broken chairs, I don't see, I see everything in order. And I wanna thank the custodial staff by doing such an excellent job all the time. And I made a note to New Durham that, and it goes for all the schools, is even the equipment they use to clean the school is clean. It's just amazing how well-kept our buildings are.
Awesome. Thank you, Dana. You are absolutely right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Brody makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Stephanie. Okay, so, Tom? Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie? Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, thank you for being here.